We'll move on to an update on the solar power purchase agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided this evening with the agenda is a brief narrative and some additional information is linked in the narrative with hyperlink text for the board's consideration and the public's review. This evening we have with us Larry Peger. He is the Finance Director with Patton Township. He's also a member of the SBPA Working Group. He is here in place of Pam Adams, who would generally be here to continue the discussion on the SBPA. But this evening, as you may recall when Pam Adams was here, she said that this would be back in front of the board, just solicit questions so we can get some answers for you to help position a higher level of confidence for a final decision by the Board of Supervisors. And so Larry is here to answer any questions. We also have Dave Majerker, our Public Works Director, who does sit on this SBPA Working Group as well and has been really front and center on behalf of Ferguson Township for over a year now, trying to get answers to the questions. And with that, I'll pause and yield the floor to Larry Peger.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Centuries. I am on the BBA Committee. I also am on the project management team. You have seen the BBA project go through. You've seen the presentations. I won't show you the presentation yet. I'm just telling you that after many years of working with it, we're finally at the position where we have contracts for both a solar provider and a retail provider. There are some questions since the solicitors of the individual groups, which 12 individual groups, they're solicitors, will come up with some questions. Me and our last BPA meeting, which was on February 4th, which was last Wednesday, we assigned our non-dated, Betsy Dequity, to be the solicitor that's going to gather the questions from each of the individual organizations' solicitors and discuss with the solicitor that we hired. So they're going to discuss to see if there's any changes that we will need to make to be in part. I just wanted to mention that. And if I have any questions that you may have on these contracts and challenges, then if I can, I will get back to you with them later.
That's great. Thanks so much, Larry. I'll see if Centuries or if Dave have anything else to add to that before we go to questions. And yes, yeah, please go ahead.
I had some questions I submitted and had answered. So typically when the questions are addressed to Larry or Pam, the project management team, they're pretty good at compiling those and coming up with answers. And I think they have this all posted in one central place.
Yeah, that was really helpful. Yes, yeah, thanks, Larry. And I think we've got a couple of different Q and A or fact sheets that are included in the reference materials. And so that's very good because if one person has a question, generally others have it as well. So I know that when we had seen a recent presentation, it was kind of requested that we come back to the working group with questions about the contracts. I'm not sure we're in that place yet. So I think at this point, it would be helpful to just generate, compile any questions or comments we have at this point from what we had seen from the presentations. I think we've all either seen the latest one through a committee or through the evening events. And then, you know, we've all been provided, again, with the Q and As, the fact sheets, the CNET recording of the presentation and the contracts which are online. So if there are questions now that we can forward back to the working group, I think there may have been some generated from these recent materials provided in presentations. So if we can get those collected tonight, forward them, get some responses back at some point, I think, to maybe to share at our next meeting. And then my thought then is to ask the solicitor to come back with a summary of the review of the contracts to present back to us so that we are receiving that review with the recommendation. And, you know, I would anticipate, looking at the timeline provided by the working group, that that would happen in late March or early April so that we're able to have further discussions and then approve them. So but again, this is just really to collect comments and questions that we have at this point, to forward them back to the working group to make sure we're in as good a place as we can be when we get that presentation from the solicitor on the contracts. So if there's anything, I just had a few and I'll stick those in at the end, but we can start on this end.
I was actually curious, Ms. Majerker and Larry, just on your, like, what are the questions? I don't want to repeat. So like, what are the like biggest, hairiest questions that you've gotten thus far? And what are those responses? Like, any, anything thus far?
I'll let Larry go first since he's on the project management team.
Okay, so that obviously the biggest questions that we've received so far have all been due with, you know, what is the risk for each individual organization? What happens if one organization defaults? What happens to the other organizations? We tried in our, in our discussions when we started this project, we had, I believe, four accomplishments on the project management team. So we were very, you know, we, we had risk front and center. So we have talked about risk. We have mitigated the risk as best as I believe that we can. Obviously, you can't, nothing is 100% risk-free. We can all tell what electric, electricity costs are going to happen in the next 15 years. As I said in my board meeting, you know, 15 years from now, electricity could be twice as much as we're paying and it's a great project, or it could be half as much as we're paying and we're all playing by our own, you know, recommending that we sign this contract. So the biggest questions definitely have been about this. And you can find those questions and answers on the Q and As that are in the reference documents.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I would agree with Larry's assessment. And I think the group has done quite well to mitigate risk and predict what there may be in the future. And also, a lot of us have climate action goals that we're trying to achieve also. I think the other question that I heard that came up at the working group was the concern about has land been secured and has approvals been granted for the land development process? The way the agreement is structured is that it's kind of, it's outside the agreement, right? It's, that process has started and the solicitor can probably address that concern better. But it was a concern that was brought up. But it is, the way the agreement's written, it kind of talks as if that process is proceeding as the agreements are being signed and that process is moving forward. So a risk could be that that land development doesn't get approved and then that developer in the agreement has to look for a different location, which might result in a delay to the project. But all of those delay issues and risk issues are addressed in the agreement. But I would say that that would be like the second high-level concern that I heard.
How are they being addressed in the agreement?
The way they're being addressed is that there are provisions that say what the developer is obligated to do in the event that the chosen location for the solar array is not approved through the land development process. So, you know, that, there's, there's one location where it's believed to be and the intent is for it to go there. But if it doesn't, then there's kind of a delay while the developer finds that alternate location.
Right. Any delays, or if I can, if I can interject here, the, the project is at the latest to be up and running October 31st, 2026. If it is not up and running by October 31st, 2026, there are penalties that the developer will pay to improve, to be delayed in the process. So those are kind of the things I think that we're looking at is, is it's to give them incentive to get it up and running by the time they say it's going to be, which is October 31st of 2026. If not, they're going to have to pay us penalties. Would you agree with that, Betsy?
Yeah, Larry, that's right. And we also at that point have the opportunity to get out of the agreement. There are provisions at that point in time. There's an initial target date and then there's a backup target date.
I think it's June of 2027.
Yeah, and that's one of the legal issues that I think the solicitors have pointed out. The language isn't clear as to when the delay damages actually kick in. Do they kick in on that initial date? Larry, you would have to...
Well, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. I need to stay on holiday. What I read was from October to June, they would pay penalties. I mean, June, we have to go to Atlanta.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's two parts where that's addressed and that's one of the issues with that agreement that we'll get sorted out for sure.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so the two things I haven't heard yet. Number one is, just because I didn't want to repeat, if an organization gets out, does it open up to the other, or reduces or doesn't use all their power? Are one of the other municipalities able to consume that additional energy?
So it is my understanding that the answer to that is yes, that if one organization gets out, they can basically sell their power to another organization. If they default, they will have to pay the developer damages for default. Then I don't think the other organizations have to pay because the developer will be home by getting the damages from the default.
What's a default in this case? We're talking about electric bills. Help me understand.
What's a default? You don't pay your electric bill. Actually, you only don't...
Oh, that's it? It's, okay, all right.
If you're saying you're not going to pay your electric bill, you just say, hey, I'm not going to pay it, you're...
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's, the risk of that is close to zero. So, cool. I was just more like if Ferguson, I don't know, we got new light bulbs and they didn't eat up as much electricity as we thought, does that give the borough some wiggle room to like consume more power and they have more savings? Or does that go out to the grid? That's what I was wondering, kind of that.
I believe that you could, Ferguson could go to the borough, save the borough who wants you to increase your percentage.
Okay. All right, great. And then number two was on the five-year, so there's a 15-year contract for, hey, we're going to buy electricity, but there's these five-year contracts with direct energy to say, manage it. How many other organizations, like, so we can break away from the other municipalities for that five-year agreement? Is that what I understood? Is that what I read? Or like, in the year six? No, in year six?
In year six, it will depend. I believe that you will be able to do that. I don't believe that you will want to do that because the economy's a scale. So part of that, part of that agreement with direct energy, part of it is to buy electricity off of the grid. Okay, so there's some organizations, like Matt had said, that COG is not allocating 100% of electricity. So they're going to have to buy 20% of it off of the grid. So that's direct energy. Also part of direct energy's job is, is to manage the whole, getting the solar off of the array into the, into the grid, getting it, getting the electric out of the grid into entire buildings. Okay? There is a cost associated. It's a service that we are purchasing from direct energy. That service, I believe, if we were out on our own, would be much more expensive if we're one organization than it will be to have all the organizations combined in that service. But do I believe that you'll be able to go out after five years and, and do an R and D and get a retail provider? Yes, I believe you will be able to do that. We will need a retail provider because the contract with Prospect 14 requires us to have a retail provider. It requires us, somebody does that service for us. So you will need one. Whether that will be less expensive, more economical than doing one for the whole group is just definitely...
That's helpful. Thank you. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you. Great questions.
Yeah, from my perspective, this is one of those things where, as my friend's mother would say, if you wait for every light to turn green, you'll never leave the house. I think if we keep what-if-ing and this and that, and for the investment that's required here, it seems minimal. I've seen this board and others, other boards, they make decisions that are in the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in a matter of 20 minutes. And this seems to just be coming up and more discussion, more discussion, where the investment from a financial standpoint, from my perspective, is minimal. Even the return, I'll say it is minimal, maybe for Ferguson, we heard it might be $75,000 over 15 years. Minimal, right? But it's still an investment and it helps with our climate action. So for me, I say let's move it forward. And that's my only comment back. So thank you.
Thanks very much. We'll go, Jeremy?
So I have been through the contracts. My weekend is, was, was gone. It's gone. I lost my weekend over going through these contracts. And honestly, I might need to go through the contracts like a few more times just to kind of fully comprehend and understand things. I appreciate the solicitor and other legal counsel that has been very diligent, even staff. I believe somebody here has even read all the contracts to go through and do this review. So we have plenty of eyes on all these documents. I, some questions that I have had, how's the, how is the township guaranteed electricity if the system doesn't generate or fails? In some of the presentations, there has been, it has been said that we would, wouldn't experience a power disruption, but like, how is all that being taken care of behind the scenes to ensure there's not a power disruption? I'm also wondering, based on something Mr. Patterson had said about what if we use lower energy bulbs? If I'm correct, through this solar power purchase agreement, we're, are we paying per the electricity we use? Or is this going to be somewhat like a cell phone or internet plan where you're just paying so much for a set amount and if you don't use it all, you, you're out? So that, that's a clarifying question that I would like to have. And I'm also wondering what, and apologize, Mr. Heller, this is a what-if. What if there was a future board, whether that be here or in another municipality? I don't know, like, totally try to, you know, is there a way that they could get out? What if they went, you know, I don't know, tried to get out of the agreement in some crafty form? I don't think you could get out of the agreement, but I've seen cases where certain municipalities just stopped paying. So it'd be kind of interesting to see how that all gets resolved and what the implications are on that, so.
Okay, so if I can, I'll try to answer this one. If your first question was, what happens if we have a line? Well, I think you have to understand that, yes, this 22 megawatt solar array is going to be in water country, but we are not going to have a direct line from that solar array to your building.
Right.
We're going to have a line that electricity has to go into the grid. I have solar panels on my house that are not directly wired into my house. They're directly wired into the grid. The reason why you want that is because otherwise at night, without some sort of batteries or some backup, you're not going to have any electricity. Okay? So you'll generate a lot more electricity, they're going to generate a lot more electricity in the summer, during the day than wherever that is. But we're going to sell that into the grid. Okay? And then we're going to buy off of the grid the electricity that we need. So no, you're not going to be paying a flat rate for your electricity. You're going to be paying a rate that's set in the PPA for the percentage of solar that's generated. And then there'll be a settlement. If we add too much solar generated, then we'll give some money back, just to store the access here. If we have less in the summer, middle of December, or if, you know, days are short, snow is falling, you're not going to generate as much electricity, you're, you're, you're going to pay for more off of the grid. And the result is it's going to be true off of the grid. So again, the year you're going to pay for in Ferguson Township's, it's, it's 1.9% of the 22 megawatts that it is supposed to generate. If it generates slightly, you're going to pay 1.9% of 90. Okay? So there's not a, it's not a cell phone plan where you use it or lose it. That's not, it's easier. And it's not a direct energy that's coming directly to the solar. Your final question, like we talked about, if somebody defaults or if somebody wants out of the, the BPA, first of all, the reason why we will have 12 different contracts, or 12 of the same contracts each signed by individuals, is so that if Ferguson decides to get out of it or to fall around it, that doesn't affect that. Okay? I don't know how Ferguson will get out of it, other than to buy. Understand that what Prospect 14 is doing is building a major asset. They're going to turn around and find investors that want to invest in this asset. And the way they're going to get investors is two ways. One is we've got tax credits that you can have, okay, and use on your tax returns. And number two is we have these 12 organizations that are going to pay us every month, so we have guaranteed income coming from this project. Without those two things, nobody would want to buy you in Prospect 14. So their job is to build this array and then turn around and find investors, whether that be a bank or to loan them money, because I don't think Prospect 14 is open for a second one. So they're going to either borrow from the bank or borrow from the state. I'll answer your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Larry, that was perfect. This is no different than the deal as somebody building an office building around the corner or a, you know, private school or a, it's just a, it's a, it's a real estate deal. So that was perfect, Larry. I really liked the way you said that. Sorry, Patty.
No, no, that's fine. No, you sort of spoke to some of the questions I had. And I'm, first of all, I'm grateful that we have the opportunity for Betsy to go through the contracts on our behalf. And I am extraordinarily grateful for that because, like Jeremy, I read through it and I think I retained maybe three things from what I read. But, and the one thing I did sort of cling on to was that this seller, so I don't, Prospect...
Prospect 14.
Thank you, yes. They, they get to, they're in charge of any sort of green credit that will be generated from this. We don't get it at all as purchasers. Okay?
We, we kept that, that way to, number one, it helps to make the project for their investors more favorable. It also keeps our electricity. But we can go out and we can buy renewable energy credits. And those renewable energy credits, and we've got some research on this, will equal about 0.3 cents a ton. So we'll still be saving on electricity even by the renewable...
Okay. Okay. And then I guess the sort of larger question in general is, I was reading something that for the sale of the Back to the Grid, I'm guessing, we pay the taxes on our portion? Is that right?
No, we pay the taxes on the purchase.
On the purchase? So we're not paying taxes on this, anything that gets sold back to the grid that we're not using?
Yeah. Because what, what gets, what gets sold to the grid is that wholesale.
Okay.
And it's, it's like, it's a resale, like, it's an electricity that's manufactured because it's here. So they don't charge tax until it's the input. We will pay tax money when we, when it is delivered to our end location, whether that be building, you know, the traffic light, whatever it is. That's when we deliver.
Okay.
And those will be the same taxes that we're paying the rest of the...
And then my final thing is, is the solar panels that we have now, and I'm assuming we sell back to the grid, that's just a separate thing altogether from this purchasing agreement? That, okay. All right, that's all? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your hours and, and reading through all that material.
Thanks. And I just have a couple of questions. A lot were asked and answered, so thanks, everyone, for asking all of those things. I think I just want to go back and I guess ask one question a slightly different way. So we are obligated to pay for the amount we've contracted for as part of the total PPA purchase. So if we're contracting for a certain amount, that's what we are obligated to pay for?
You are obligated to pay for a percent of a generation. You are obligated to pay for a percentage of a generation. It is not in specific triple. You're not saying we're going to pay for 500,000 triple. You are obligated to pay for 1.9% of what is generated on the solar.
Okay.
However, however, that is a marketable commodity seller. Two things connect that. One is we sell it, they access, they donate back to the grid. More than what you paid for, or less than. Depends on, you know, the time of the day, what's happening with electric. Over time, electric rates have increased over time. But they sell and buy electric every hour. So it goes up and down, up and down, hour. So depending on, you know, what they sell it, it may sell for more higher than what they use it, they sell for less than what they use it. And then at the end of the year, we turn it all up and put down adjustments.
Thank you, okay. And that makes sense. I just, I wanted to kind of ask it from the reverse angle, so I appreciate that. So I guess just on the contracts themselves, so, and the one contract that was included in the SharePoint is the transaction confirmation, and that was the SCASD example that's in there. So our solicitor has been or will be provided with ours?
That's correct.
Okay, and.
And even the one that's in there, the SCASD that's in there, the company included direct energy speed, 0.025. That's not the cost of your electricity. That's just.
Okay. And then just so we're clear, so, you know, our solicitor is Betsy. And so Betsy has agreed to, so you are, it said in the narrative, I think that you are the lead for the group. So I just want to clarify, so you're essentially collecting the questions, kind of like we were doing today, collecting the questions from the other municipal or entity solicitors and sharing those with the PPA solicitor and then sharing back responses you get. So you're, you're the contact person, but not, you're not reviewing this on behalf of the different entities and municipalities?
Well, I am in fact reviewing it based on custody, and that's for you, for Patton, and for Senate County. And we've already discussed with the county administrator and the two managers how we'll manage that. But as a practical man, you're correct. I'm not going to be giving the feelings back to any other parties besides the three of you. And I think at this point, the intent is, before I would go to the outside council, we're going to probably review those comments again with the working group, at least I think that's what John had asked on Friday. And that way, we identify what are legal issues and what are what I would call risk issues. And then I can speak to that individual and see what price is. I mean, that's really what's going to happen.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of level set, just to make that clear in my mind. In the executive summary, it had said that none of the contracts could be changed unless agreed to by all the counterparties. And so I guess that was an interesting note. And so is that, is that, did I read that correctly, was a question? That was in the executive summary provided by Green Sky.
I think the intent here and the desire of Prospect 14 and certain ones like Energy is that they don't have 2.9% with everyone. I don't think we should read that to suggest that at the moment, these are done deals and we have to take them as they are. But I think ultimately, at least the Prospect 14 agreement here, the principal agreements are going to be the same between Patton, Ferguson, the borough, the county, the school district. And I think that's a matter of convenience. I suppose if there was one party that had some burden issue and wanted to negotiate it separately and they were willing, that's fine. But I don't have a sense of that. I honestly can't answer that question either because I've not spoken to our council. All of the communications thus far have been filtered to the consultants and the school district's representative to then speak to the attorney. So, you know, I'm not saying that's not true. That's not my point. But I am saying that sometimes when a developer turn me on the other end of the line, it's a different, it's certainly a different conversation than when a lawyer is talking to a lawyer.
Thanks. Yeah, and I, again, just appreciative of the, you know, the updates, the answers you were able to provide. I wasn't even sure we'd be able to get answers tonight, just, you know, trying to kind of get this next level or next round of questions out there. So to get all that information is great. And I, you know, I agree, and I'm supportive of the project. And I think what's important about all these questions and things we, you know, if we get questions from residents, is to make sure that we are crossing all those Ts and dotting all those Is. And, you know, Patty and I had spoken about this. I think, you know, this is innovative and this is new and this is different, a very different process for a lot of these groups involved with this. And so we want to do it right. And that way, the next time something that is going to be so beneficial, you know, hopefully, but is also innovative and new comes along, it's not like, well, you know, that we have a bad experience to look back on. No, we want this to move forward and succeed. And so I think it's great to put all the questions out there and challenge it, you know, to see what comes back because we want to be secure and certain in these decisions. So I think, you know, what I had said early in the discussion is that what I'm hoping is that next time we have this on our agenda is that we could have more of a, maybe a summary of the review of the contracts and standings of where everything is at as an informational item with some discussion. I'm sure additional questions at that point, but to really, you know, hopefully, if Betsy can come back and Larry or Pam to come and with Dave to give us really that kind of high-level overview of what the contracts are including, what provisions are favorable to us, to the developer, to, you know, so I think that's important for us to hear. So we'll look forward to that next time. Is there anything else from any of the board members?
I think the contract summaries would be very beneficial. I think the more information that we can get out in plain language will help educate the public because there is a lot of material in those contracts. And if that's all the public gets, I would be afraid that maybe things would maybe get misconstrued and then get thrown out in the square as misinformation. So having that plain language would be helpful.
And even following the model, that executive summary that's in there, that was very helpful to have since, you know, we just have the contracts and the legal language in there. If there's nothing else from the board, I'll see if staff has anything else to contribute or ask. At this point, you're satisfied with where we ended on that, okay? And then I'll just thank Larry and Betsy and Dave. That was very, very helpful.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
And I have a project management meeting tomorrow morning. I will bring your request and contract summaries up.
Fantastic.
Okay.
All right.
I will join and have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think you need an emotion from this. Because we really, you know, since we had both of them here to answer a lot of these questions, we really didn't have to forward it. So we can move on.